I'm assuming, that's I'm assuming.
He's trying to sell, he's trying to get rid of candid property.
Yeah, I'm trying to sell, I'm trying to sell property. You guys have seen this presentation.
We're reconvening in legislative session 2019-10 for May 21st, 2019, Wycomico County Council. First item on the open work session is with Mr. Weston Young, and the topic is surplus property.
Yes, good afternoon now. Yeah, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. So, in August of last year, prior to the election, I presented these properties for consideration to be declared surplus. I basically have the exact same presentation with a date change on the first slide regarding some detail about each of these positions.
Have any details changed?
I don't know if it's on PAC 14 yet. No details have changed, other than law has reviewed them and found them, nothing tied to them that would make it tricky to sell. So, some history of this, just to refresh everybody. I went through and sort of after several conversations had come up in discussions with council, I reviewed all the county-owned property, and I tried to determine what the current use was, and if there's a planned purpose. So, do we need it for a long term? So, property acquired, say around a county facility like the landfill or the airport, we're not likely to part with. And I tried to identify parcels that had no use and could potentially be sold. These properties presented were the low-hanging fruit. These are the ones that, most of them were acquired from a tax sale years ago, and have just been sitting on our rolls. They'd be better off parted with and put back on the tax rolls. With each one, I had planning and zoning provide a brief review of each parcel, and...
Weston, are you gonna put this on for PAC 14?
Yeah, it's supposed to, it's supposed to be on... Oh, am I not doing something? That's probably what it is. This is on the desktop, full screen mode.
See your cursor. Try...
Oh, display?
Double.
He screwed it up. Yep.
I do it here?
Oh, here you go. There we go. Thank you all.
It's been cut down to two minutes.
Okay, these are all the comments I had mentioned when the screen wasn't up. Again, these 12 properties are ones that we've identified as low-hanging fruit. There's a handful more that we plan to go through, playing a longer game. The first property here is 233 Naylor Mill Road. It's a little over an acre, and my understanding, the original purpose of this lot was extending Northwood Drive. That development has not ever occurred, and we see this as a property that we can part with. This image shows what is four parcels total, and the one highlighted in the yellowish-green is the one in question. This is 601 Delaware Avenue. As my understanding, all of these were tax sale properties that were obtained and have sat on the county books. The next one, 504 Woodland and 506 Woodland, they're all adjacent to each other, and then we'll come back to the other one off Delaware Avenue shortly. This is 700 Rose Street. It's another residential lot from a tax sale. 1802 Mount Herman Road. One thing to note is, when we use our GIS mapping, the lines aren't always as accurate. This does not include the driveway, so somebody does not have a driveway through county property. It actually, the easternmost property line goes...
Don't be so sure of that.
Yeah, that is possible, but we did check, wondering. That was a question we had. But I don't know the background as to why the county obtained this property, but we don't have any potential use for it.
There was, at one time, there was, my understanding, there was talk of connecting that property around to, I think it's Gumby Road.
Okay.
In other words, making that...
Extending Tillman?
Tillman, yeah, around, and it never happened, you know.
So, it's smart to acquire, if we believe that we will have a future road, acquiring what we need to do that, given that doesn't seem like that's the case. We feel that this is a property we can part with, and so that's off Mount Herman at Tillman. This other one is another where we question the boundary a bit, but it's 2515 Old Ocean City Road. It's a little bit of distance off of Old Ocean City Road, and again, not sure. I believe this was acquired during the development of that extension of Beaglin Park Drive, and it is no longer needed.
I was wondering whose property that was. I see motorcycles and ATVs cutting through there all the time.
Yeah, again, it's something that the county owns, that highlighted portion, and...
Who cuts the grass, because it's always overgrown?
It's probably, we don't have somebody cutting that grass.
You know, Weston, can you go back to that?
Sure, sure.
Isn't there something being built across the road from there, some kind of power?
Yes, a power facility, substation, yeah, substation.
You know, at some point in time, I mean, I was the one that probably brought this up about us owning too many properties, you know, but at some point in time, we're gonna be talking water and sewer in that area. I don't know whether that's something, whether it's big enough, probably isn't big enough versus any project we would use, but anyway.
Sure, sure. You know, we will have to look at possible chlorine plants, like small little injector sites, if we try to take municipal water too far. If it's something that we're managing it, such as sewer and needing space for drip irrigation, we're gonna need probably that whole farm field to the east if we were to propose something, but that's also prime development land. Okay, so the next property, I don't have an aerial photo, but I want to call your attention. This was an old plat, as you can see, hand-drawn from the Barron Creek property. The property to the left of the drawing is what was known as the Suggs property that we acquired. We acquired all of what's shown there, and we have since subdivided and sold that house. On the right, you see a little piece of land. It's known as parcel three. It is not accessible from public right-of-way. It's attached to property, and it's just a small bit of land that the adjacent property owner had contacted us about showing interest in buying it. So, it's small, unusable land in that location.
So, on something like that, you know, so if we go forward with this, we'll be disposing of these properties? This list of properties, that'll be one of them. Does it have to be sold, or can some of these be traded, like if the county needs some more, you know, like a little bit of property for the road, you know, because we're building the road there? There may be a need for, you know, might be useful to swap that out, maybe, you know, with some areas right there, you know, something like that. So, I guess, can it be sold, or does it have to be sold, or can, would this legislation allow a swap, that were, you know, something that was, you know, would work out for the county?
Sure. I do know, in this case, I looked into that, seeing if there was right-of-way that we needed in that area. It had been, you know, some time ago, and I can't recall. Nothing comes to mind in terms of, yes, we could use that additional right-of-way. That is something we could consider and get approval from council if we see potential for that. I think the way the resolution was drafted was to give some flexibility in terms of how we part with these parcels. We're gonna be seeking, you know, optimum compensation for each, and the tax sale properties will probably be good candidates for that. For a property like this, that's sort of, who would buy that? It's probably only one owner. But, yeah, that's a, that's a good question.
Weston, that's a question I have. I mean, from a process standpoint, is there any policy you have to follow, or is it pretty much, once it's declared surplus, you have the, you know, the executive office has the ability to, you know, sell it right to a neighboring property owner, or do they have to publicly make it available, or just...
Yeah, I know Mr. Taylor has some comments.
Yeah, I just, I think what you're gonna have to do is, when we do the surplus resolution, we're gonna have to make a decision as to auction or private sale on each parcel. Looking at the county code on that, we have worked up a resolution, Ms. Hurley and I, we did it for the Barron Creek property last year, to hopefully keep some of the advertising costs down. Because between the county code and the state code, I think we figured, what, five times, if you didn't try to...
Overlap them.
Overlap them, you'd have to advertise five times to sell a piece of property.
Which would seem kind of ridiculous, for somebody, I mean, because the bulk of these we've been talking about are nominal in...
Correct.
Value, so, you know, we could spend...
We're gonna spend more in advertising.
We could spend more in advertising, then, yeah, right.
I mean, for example, the piece that we're talking about right now, that might be one where you just wanna do a private sale, or a swap, if you, if that could be worked out.
Doesn't make sense to auction this, because there's only one.
But other parcels, you might wanna definitely go the auction route. So, but it's something to think about for both Weston and council when we get into this.
So, yeah, the way the resolution that was in your briefing book was drafted was to just give flexibility and let us figure out, okay, if it's not able to be sold by auction necessarily, we'll go with a realtor.
Well, you could actually do private sale. I mean, on some of them like that, you know, why go to a realtor, if you know, if you know who your buyer is?
And that's not necessarily my expertise in terms of, you know, selling the properties, so I would be looking at what is, where do we get the best compensation that also gets it back on the tax rolls. So, yeah, I'll be leaning on others for that direction. So, that was parcel three, was part of the Barron Creek acquisition. This one is outside of Hebron, off of Wood and Bell. It was a Board of Ed acquisition that they parted with, and we do not feel that's needed, but that's about two acres there. Capitola Road, this is another one where the GIS doesn't show the exact boundary. I believe this was a tax sale acquisition. The property is approximately an acre. It's not right by Clara Road, and I don't know if it's a buildable lot necessarily, but it's, because that tends to be, you know, wet.
Yeah, not likely.
Yeah.
It's all hydrox soils.
Yeah, hydrox soils, maybe hunting property, if an acre's enough. This would probably be another one that an adjacent property owner would possibly wanna scoop up. This is Delaware, another photo of the Delaware Avenue parcel. The Woodland lots are to the south. It's a little bit over a half acre, but this was a tax sale acquisition. Looking at what the county attorney, yeah, I believe this is described as lots 28 and 30. It was shown as one lot in GIS, but it may be two adjacent lots.
Does it front the road as well? I know the lines doesn't show that.
Yeah, the line that it attaches to is the right-of-way line. And Red Hill Lane, this is a property off Nanicoke Road, and it used to be a dredge site, a small dredge site. Nothing like what we need when we dredge the Wycomico, but for a boat slip or two, this was, my understanding, what this property was used for. And it's two and a half acres. The, an adjacent property owner has reached out to us with interest in buying, but we'll have to see. And that concludes. So, those were roughly 12 of the low-hanging fruit. As I dig through the list a bit further, I think there's other properties we can potentially part with. We just need to confirm, you know, if they have, like, off of 50 near Winterplace, there's a lot of properties bought with program open space, and it's, is there a better use, and can we move those program open space rights to something else?
You've got everything to the east of Wallston Switch Road that was part of that parcel. It's basically, they've been using it to rent the hunters, I think.
Yes, so a hunting lease, and that revenue can go back to the park. So, that's something that, you know, we'll look into those a bit closer as time goes on and go from there. So, anyway, gladly take any questions you will have. It sounds like there may be some revisions to the resolution prior to council adoption.
Any questions?
How are you gonna make these sales, if you do go surplus, in case there's a sale? Does that have to go through auction with the county, or is it, would it be permissible to just sell through regular?
If I remember correctly, I think auction is default, but...
Well, yeah, right. It's auctions default, but then we'd have to provide two categories, either auction or private sale. And within private sale, you could use a realtor, or you could just sell it yourself.
Can we start off by putting it...
And some counties do that. They don't...
Can we start off by putting it in the hands of a realtor first? Especially with the cost of advertising.
If we designate it as a private sale.
Some of them might be, like the one on Barron Creek, might be, I mean, just why waste our, any time on it, actually. I mean, yes, you could put it with a realtor, but many counties just sell surplus property just themselves.
I was just wondering how we get those.
Put a price on it and sell it.
You wanna be conscious of, when you do sell it, to make sure that people in the surrounding areas or interested parties do know about it, because after it's sold, then that's when you're gonna hear grief.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, and that's...
I would've bought it if I had known, correct.
Right, right. So, that's, I think that's the big thing, that you gotta make sure that it works out, that it's for sale.
Yeah, the next step is to have a public hearing before we actually vote on the resolution.
No, I mean, if it comes to, if it comes to surplus sales, it would have to come through us, anyway, right?
Yes.
Just in terms of what Mr. Holloway said, I mean, I've noticed in some counties, when you drive by, they're selling property, they'll just put a "for sale" sign on it. Come back to county executives.
Probably the best way to do it.
As long as we have the negotiating talent in the county, that you do it from a commercial realtor, you know, it's a big difference in bringing buyers in, if the county wants to try to sell it and take the first guy that walks in the door, or whether you go to a commercial realtor who then, you know, scans, you know, the universe for potential buyers.
Sure. With the Barron Creek parcel three, that's the one where I think a private sale to the adjacent property owner would be the simplest, cleanest way of doing it. With the others, I think, trying to have that competitive process that lets people know everybody in the area.
And your Clara Road might be a candidate for that, too.
All right, we'll use your discussion.
Okay. So, that is that item. I don't know if we have time for the...
Second item, I think we can get through this. Yeah, the second item on the agenda is the revisions of the CIP. I think we've already gone through the initial revisions, so we're just, I guess, looking at whatever the updated revisions are.
Sure. So, with that, to recap, it was originally, the CIP was submitted in December. April 12th, I submitted a memo, and we spoke about it a few days later at a work session. In that time, I have sent two memos. The first of those two was April 23rd. I touched on some changes that I had made from the December document that I did not lay out in that first memo. There was an adding error on the funding source summary page that luckily was pointed out to me. I provided a summary of the change in funding sources from the December submittal to now, and then I also provided details regarding the existing Pago. That was the new funding source we had mentioned. And the existing Pago funds, again, are leftover money from older Pago projects that have not been touched in at least three years. So, there was money left, typically leftover money from projects that had been sitting. And through the CIP and the associated budget process, we are requesting to reallocate those funds to pay for some of the projects in the CIP. In my May 15th memo, a lot shorter, it's basically about the reinstatement of the Mardella High Middle School project. We were notified by Dr. Hanlon and her staff that the state portion of the Westside Intermediate roof money was not going to be available. We had proposed $291,000 as the county match for that project. So, what you see in the most recent version of the CIP is we have moved that $291,000 to Mardella. It allows for what they call an ed spec study, which is part of the process in laying out what the school needs and the ultimate form of the school, and it's important because it also keeps the school and the state queued, is our understanding. The remaining requested funds in the out-years are shown. The difference between the $291 and the requested $700,000 was put in FY '21, and the funding source for those out-years has just been shown as to be determined. So, that generally concludes the update to the CIP, and I'll gladly...
So, the Westside project's just being moved one year?
We do not know. We were told the state, it's not on their radar. They do not have their funds.
So, is it on our radar?
The match we had for it has been reallocated. I think something like this, and what we've tried to do is to make sure we fund these systemic renovations. So, if there's air-conditioning issues at a school, we'll gladly pay for that. There's typically a state match, and what we're finding is the state's not matching these projects like they used to. So, we're aware of it. You know, we wanted to fix the roof, but we didn't have the full amount needed. We were requiring the state to pay a large portion.
Is there money damaged being caused right now?
Oh, there has to be. The roof is one of the most important parts of a building, and whether it's...
That's my point.
Whether it's Westside or Detention Center's having issues as well, everything below it starts failing from water damage and so forth. We do not have the full amount needed for Westside Intermediate, so we're moving that money to help get Mardella started.
What is the full amount for Westside?
$271,000.
The roof?
Let me...
You moved, our part was $291, right?
Yeah. 1.4 million comes to mind. I don't know if I have that information, because I have the latest document, which removed, I can find that.
I guess my question is, if you're saying the roof's bad, and of course, there's probably problems, doesn't the state recognize that? I mean, you know, like Larry said, you know, the roof, or you said the roof's most important part of a building, and if it's that bad, bad enough for us to put it on the CIP, hasn't the Board of Ed, you know, pushed enough on the state to get their end of the funding? I don't, I'm finding that a little baffling.
Yeah, that is probably a better conversation to have with Dr. Hanlon and her facility staff. The way it was, the way it was explained to us was that the state does not have their portion line for this project. I do know they've had some change in leadership in terms of school funding, and there's proposed legislation that will hopefully provide more money for schools. Yes, we, again, the roof is, you know, the roof and the foundation are two of the key parts of the building, and if either one of them starts to fail, you're gonna have major structural issues.
Right. And I want to point out that many of the speakers at the last meeting kept talking about mold, so we know where mold is coming from.
It, and, yeah, it can be, you know, water seeping in from the roof, or groundwater. It could be inadequate heating and air conditioning. Nothing's drying the air.
Right. And as much rain as we've been getting, it should be a concern.
If you oversize the air conditioning unit, you can get mold as well.
Absolutely.
I mean, do you think the assessment's right, that the roof's really that bad? I mean...
It was Board of Ed's third priority, so they gave us, one of the things different this year is they gave us their top three priorities. They're understanding our funding limitations, and I believe, I believe we're coming together, even though it doesn't sound that way in the media. I believe we are working better together than before. Their top three priorities were Beaver Run, number one, Mardella, number two, Westside Intermediate, number three. Hearing that the state didn't...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, hearing that the state, I guess, did not share Westside Intermediate being a priority, we're reallocating the money we were gonna put towards it as our match.
Does the state come down and look at it?
That's a question for the Board of Ed. I know they're, I know they defend their buildings, you know, with the state.
Years ago, not long after I was on, you know, in '07, we had this same kind of conversation about Civic Center, and we had a private roofer go out and look at it. Well, we really don't need a roof. It needs repairing, you know, and instead of, I think we spent $70,000 instead of a couple million, or whatever it was, whatever. Figures escaped me now, but I would suppose, I guess, because it was number three on the list, the roof's not as bad as...
They may be taking a priority to funding new schools and not these renovations, but...
But not keeping the roof up is why you need new schools sometimes.
Yeah, and I can tell you, at least from our standpoint, the one time, what they call systemic renovation. So, this would, for us, if the state matched, we would be giving $291,000 overall, the project. I'm going from memory, but it was over a million dollars, like maybe 1.4 million. So, we're matching, we're getting a significant match, and we're taking care of an existing school. That's not committing any money in the out-years. We're taking care of that one item. If we could do that and take care of the air conditioning and, you know, it seems like it's piecemealing, but it takes care of our existing infrastructure. The issue and the concerns we still have with Mardella is that overall, the county match is $18.2 million over four years. We don't know three, four years out, what, if we can afford that. So, we have concerns when you promise money that many years out, and that amount of money. Again, the roof was one where we would get a hefty match from the state, and it would be a one-time. In FY '20, we could fix it.
Glad Mardella's back on the books, and I'm sorry that the Westside roof's not being repaired, too, so can't have it both ways, I guess.
Weston, I have your, this memo here. I don't seem to have the actual, I don't have the actual graph that breaks down year by year. So, you're doing $291,000 this year, and physically, you're 20. What's the number for 20, 21, I mean, excuse me, 21, 22, 23, 24?
Sure. In the CIP document, it should be updated.
I don't think I have an updated one.
Okay. We'll get you one.
Yeah, there's three versions. They have...
I went back online and pulled it back up again, and...
The one online should say May 15th. When I emailed the latest revision to Laura, I also emailed IT and asked them to put that on.
It's probably me, but just so you could...
Eric, I got a copy. 4.4 in '21, 7 in '22, and 6.5 in '23.
Correct.
But that's to be determined, so that's, it's kind of nebulous.
Yes, which we, again, in the out-years, we don't know where that money's coming from. Again, we're gonna be pushing hard at the state level to get state, school funds.
So, I think for the people who are interested in Mardella, so the $291, got that money, it's gonna be spent, start the process.
If everything's approved, yes.
Next year, though, there's no guarantees, is what you're saying?
There's a $4.4 million placeholder in here, and we have the funding as to be determined. We'll know more a year from now, in terms of what our revenues are looking like, and... We'll know more a year from now in terms of what our revenues are looking like and.
So Michelle's going to have to come back here and.
Every day. Every year.
She doesn't mind.
I will if I have to, but.
With that level of funding, you know, the ball is well-rolling at that point. And I think what we'll do and what we do every year with the CIP is we look at, okay, where are we? Are there any projects that when we finally went out to bid, we did not have enough money? And do we need to put that in FY '21? Or can we find money and go through the reallocation process to make that project whole? We'll have a better idea of the revenues. It's important to note, though, that in '21, we're looking, we're borrowing another 7 million for Beaver Run. And we have this 2.8 million for the Public Safety Building queued up for '21 borrowing. We also have, I believe it's 1.2 million for Coburn Mill Dam. That's another, we're working on Morris Mill now. Coburn Mills are second high-hazard dam. And that needs some improvements as well. So we're already looking at a significant borrowing next year.
Where are you, where are you at on this Public Safety Building anyway? There's, I read somewhere where there were some issues with the design.
Uh, there's, there's no issues. We, what the Sheriff's Office had started was a concept feasibility study. So it was looking at what do they need in a new facility? And looking, as the Board of Ed does with their schools, looking out and saying, what's the ultimate use and growth of the facility? We have recently awarded the design. So one of the reasons we pushed out the Public Safety Building is by the time the design is complete, and I don't have the latest timeline with me, but by the time the design is complete, construction has started, we have enough money to last us into FY '21.
You paid for one design?
It, with, in a way, again, it was more of a concept plan. Like the design documents, like even just for the remodeling we're doing at the courthouse here, you know, you're talking hundreds of pages of electrical, mechanical. We don't have that done yet. We acquired the site. We, it's a great location. With the chosen design consultant, they're going to take all that into consideration. And.
I hope it's a lot less.
22 and a half million.
Yeah. They, every other sentence that comes out of my mouth is, you know, we have a budget and you need to fit within that budget. Yeah, the, we're not looking at a 20-plus million, 22 million dollar.
I was, I was just talking about the design.
Understood, understood. So, so, so just where I was going with all of that is what we have proposed borrowing in this document for '21 is 7 million for Beaver Run, 1.2 for Coburn Mill Dam, and then I believe 2.8 for a portion of the Sheriff's Building. So. And whatever else possible.
Is Coburn Mill Dam going to cause any road closures?
During, during the work, quite possibly. It's not to the extent that Morris Mill is. And Morris Mill, they have to replace the holes the way. I think Coburn Mill in Dallas can go into more detail next time you talk to him. The downstream embankment needs to be armored. I think the spillway's fine, but I may be, may be a little rusty on those details.
Have you got an update on the South Division Street opening?
I know one of the big issues we had was when we removed, and dam safety does not like vegetation. Yeah. I don't have the latest, no. I just know that they're.
You don't have to go into detail.
Yeah. We got through the state concerns.
Any other questions on the revisions?
Next question?
And we'll make sure you get the latest copy.
Well, I, I pulled it up while we were talking. I don't see the 291,000 listed in fiscal year '20.
Did you get the, it's the 514 line? Again, this is the third version?
Yeah. If the cover, if the cover page says.
Yeah, okay.
Revised, okay. We'll make sure you get it.
All right. That's, all right. We good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Wes. All right, thank you.
Wes, and I do want to have a conversation with you on some other point on both dams.
Okay.
Not now.
Yeah.
You need signage on Morris Mill, big time.
Okay.
Nobody knows where to go. You end up on Jackson Road. End up on Jackson Road.
Okay.
In Fruitland. I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Could we do closed, so I could get out of here by any chance? Five minutes now and minutes later.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that.
What are we doing?
A closed session with a legal counsel.
Yeah. Close session.
Yep. Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've downloaded like six of these things.
No, no, that's the wrong one too. It was the one from April.
Yeah, right. That's why I just.
As I was looking at it, and I looked again, and it's in the document thing, but it's the 514.
Yeah, that document thing needs to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I found it, but it, no, you didn't. But it, again, there's three, you know, there's, it's not.
Bob, what's going on? Oh, yeah, make sure we're good. Thanks.
Okay, this is a. The Wycomico County's reconvening in the legislative session 2019-10 for May 21st, 2019. And the current item on the agenda, first work session, is with the Sheriff's Department to review the budget with the Sheriff's Department. Pleasure to have you all here.
Good to be here, sir.
If you could just announce your names and titles to the public.
Sheriff Mike Lewis, seated to your far left, audience far right. Wycomico County Sheriff, seated to my immediate left, Captain Todd Richardson, our administrative captain. Seated to his immediate left is Ms. Julie Struckman, our financial specialist.
Thank you very much. We've reviewed a lot of what you have. I think actually what we, what we are very aware of, and what you've talked about before, is the fact that primarily in your budget, most things are in balance, except for that you are requesting three new deputies.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I guess maybe that would be the gist of the conversation here, unless the council members have any other questions. But we'll let you open up if you'd like to, Sheriff or Captain, or Julie, however you want. You have the table.
First and foremost, we have requested the positions of the three new deputies based on a number of factors. The opioid crisis here in Wycomico County remains very real. We had some small victories, and then we experienced several setbacks with the opioid overdoses and fatalities here in Wycomico County. Honestly, we've had several fatal overdoses here most recently. So in order to address the opioid crisis here in Wycomico County, instead of just doing business as usual, I reallocated our personnel to a three-man unit. It's called a community action team. Two deputies, one of those is a K-9 handler, and one of those is a supervisor, a first-line supervisor or a corporal's position. We had to pull those positions from different areas within the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office because in the 12 and a half years that I've been the elected sheriff in Wycomico County, we have not gained one additional personnel other than filling vacancies that were in our budget. We have not gotten any additional people. Therefore, we thought it was certainly time to backfill those positions that we had stolen these positions from to address the opioid crisis. Number two, in our judiciary, our judicial protection unit within the courts, as you guys are well aware, our judges are constantly requesting a stronger presence in our courtrooms with the addition of courtroom five, which was the ceremonial courtroom, and is, will be operational with the additional cases that Wycomico County has experienced. We now have additional personnel assigned down here to the courts. It is nothing for me to come down to the courts like I did one day last week for the sentencing of a murder suspect when I got down here. Unbeknownst to me, Captain Babe Wilson had already reassigned several additional personnel from throughout our office in the courtroom for the sentencing because this was a validated blood gang member. So we're frequently having to bring deputies down here to the courthouse. And our schools, we are handling an immense amount of calls throughout our schools every year, as you can imagine. We now have 10 Wycomico County Sheriff's deputies in our schools. And we are conducting more active shooter training today than we ever have. I'm getting multiple requests. They had just assigned Captain Babe Wilson and Sergeant Brian Donahoe to do active shooter training for Holloway Funeral Home. We have a meeting coming up with them on June the 5th. Everybody's concerned about active shooters in their businesses here in Wycomico County, in their churches here in Wycomico County. So that's what, we're conducting a lot of active shooter training. And we are having to rob Peter to pay Paul every single day. We cannot continue at the rate we're going without additional personnel. That's the number one request I'm getting from the rank and file within the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. I'm hearing it every day. Between the county council and the county executive, we are very, very happy with our salaries, with our disability, and with our benefits. But what we're lacking right now is manpower. And just this morning, we had a high-speed pursuit. I was awakened in the last two mornings in the middle of the night. But we had a high-speed pursuit this morning. Started out of the vehicle, came through radar at 88 miles an hour down in Willards. Deputy pursued the vehicle all the way to Route 50 in the bypass. When it got on the ramp to go north on the bypass, he left the roadway at, we have already reconstructed his speed. He left the roadway at 113 miles per hour and totally destroyed, annihilated. Took two rollbacks to load the remains of the car up.
Who was he driving?
He was driving a Dodge Charger, 2013 Dodge Charger. Both of the occupants from French Georges County, Maryland, are in the hospital with very serious injuries. They both survived. We thought the one might pass, but appears they're both going to survive now. What I was going to tell you is the 2013 Dodge Charger that the deputy was driving and pursuing this Dodge Charger, that his Dodge Charger died at the scene. 2013 Dodge Charger, based on the high speeds and pursuit and killed, blew the engine, didn't it?
Yes, that's what we believe right now. We have a.
On your car?
Yes, our car.
Destroyed the other car. My deputy did not, our deputy did not wreck. But both, he was, he was chasing a Dodge Charger with his Dodge Charger.
Who gets his engine put in there?
What's that?
His engine wasn't in the car any longer.
Oh, no. The engine and transmission both were ripped out of the Dodge Charger he was pursuing.
In the pursuit, you read about what goes on in some of the cities, Los Angeles, you know? At what point did you, would you call off a pursuit?
Joe, we weigh a number of factors. We consider road conditions. We consider traffic conditions. We consider weather conditions. At 3:00 in the morning, there was nothing on the road. And he came through radar at 88 miles an hour. A deputy pursued him. We also taken into consideration, quite honestly, the violation itself. How serious is the violation? We have to allow the deputy's discretionary power to pursue a vehicle. Ultimately, the chase is controlled by the duty officer sitting at the desk or the patrol supervisor on patrol. They two are out there, they're monitoring the weather, the road conditions, and there are a lot of factors that come into play. I have self-terminated a number of pursuits in my career as a cop. I felt this is not worth it. I'm going to terminate it. I will tell you that there were two separate chases last night. One involved in Salisbury City, one involved in Fruitland. The one in Fruitland, so we had three separate chases overnight. The one in Fruitland, the guy turned off his headlights and was blowing through traffic lights with no headlights on. So they end up losing him. They end up losing him completely. Salisbury City called off their chase because it was earlier in the night when there was heavy traffic in the city. So they self-terminated their chase. There were three pursuits overnight.
But what you see some of these cities do now, what a lot of police officers don't do, they got these accident review boards. And you pursue them, the police officer has to go in front of this review board to be found guilty of, to someone.
We were the only ones to catch our people. But we felt at 3:00 in the morning, we had it under control. They didn't, but we did.
Do you have any of those propelled things that stick on the car?
Yeah, they're called 45 caliber rounds.
Now, now, you know what I'm talking about?
I know exactly. No, we don't have any of those. No. We don't have any of those.
Hey, Mike, I've got a question. The, I'm a new guy, you know, on this council. Where are you?
A pleasure to have you back, sir.
No, thank you. The, with your agreement with the executive, is this the last year? Are you in the last year of your bonding agreement with the executive? When does that start again?
Two years.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess where are you in the cycle of that and so forth?
The next to last year starts July 1. The final FOP raises are in effect this July 1.
Okay, so that's what helps me because I saw.
Absolutely.
Because I was thinking you're in your last, because the last year, you know, I think if I remember right, the last year, you don't get a.
Yeah, next year is a flat budget. There's no raises in next year's budget.
And I saw the increase, I was like, was this?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm a year ahead of, I'm one year ahead of myself.
Last raise, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, under this current, and it'll be renegotiated.
What is a part-time civilian sheriff? Sheriff, PT civilian, what is that?
Judicial Protection Unit.
Judicial Protection. It's the civilian.
Oh, okay.
The guys manning the magnetometers when you come into the rest of you in between the old circuit court and the new circuit court. They are part-timers, retired people. Absolutely.
In the schools, are y'all arresting some of those kids?
Absolutely.
A lot more?
Absolutely. Yeah, we are. Thing, honestly, things have changed with Dr. Donna Hanlon.
Let y'all do.
We are arresting more people now, absolutely. Did I see that you wanted to put two deputies in schools? Or was that another school district? No, we've got 10 deputies in schools right now. I thought I'd read somewhere in the past week that somebody was going to be putting a deputy, because of the size of the schools, more than one deputy in the school. So it's not us. No, not us. And we handle all the schools in the counties. You won't know whether they're in the city or in the county. You know what, I think, was it the current commission? Or it was something, I was trying to say that we were discussing that with the Pittsfield situation. Are we going to have to expand school resource officers in more schools?
Captain Wilson, probably speak best to that.
Yeah, you're correct. The current study has been done as a push of philosophy. And what we're doing right now is an adequate response to a selected area of the commission in the state of Maryland has not designated that. Oh, yeah, I got you.
Thank you, pal.
I apologize.
Captain Babe Wilson from the Sheriff's Office.
They can't hear you.
Yeah.
They won't hear you on PAC 14.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, certainly, the current commission that come out, that's one of the things we're discussing statewide with the Training Commission, as well as the Maryland Center for Safe Schools. Presently, they're encouraging that you have somebody in your high school and middle schools. Then next year, they'll push it into your feeder schools. As long as we have an adequate response to a certain area, that's acceptable right now. So they're still in discussions about how to manage that because of the cost.
Who does a, like a security assessment or anything? We just heard about last week, Mardella, where you have 19 boardwalks or something worthy. I don't even know what they're at now. But, and of course, a lot of spaces go in and out. I don't know, who's the one that actually sits down and figures out?
The Board of Education is responsible through the education portion of it, and they report it back by June 15th of this year for that. So that would be.
Is that with security professionals that?
Yeah, Safe Schools Coordinator. And they work in conjunction with MCSS.
Which is Maryland Center for School Safety.
Right. Well, I do know, working in public safety all these years, and it's not just the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS, police departments. Many have not seen an increase in staffing, as you stated, 12 and a half years. And no telling how many years prior to that. But the deputies are doing a lot more with less. And are we improving the quality of life by not having enough officers, enough boots on the streets? So we, we need to do something. Could not agree with you more, Mr. Vice President. And again, as much as I have requested additional people throughout the years, it's never made it to this particular location. it to this particular location. And I can tell you, we are in dire need of additional positions. We've had vacancies filled through the county executive, which have ultimately been approved by the county council, men and women. But we have not had new positions created or approved in my 12 and a half years as sheriff.
And Mike, I don't know if it helps with the executive before he gets here, but I just know myself, I'm a numbers guy. So the kind of thing I would be looking for me if I was sitting in their seat would be the data. And I mean by the data is like, where do you compare per capita with other counties? I mean, does the state provide that? I know like with teachers, with education, you know, I can tell you every single county, we can compare teachers paid to teachers pay. We can compare per capita, you know, for the number of teachers per population, per county. You know, we can do that up and down the board. So, you know, to see where we stand to identify, is that need there? So, I mean, do you all have access to that kind of data?
We do have access to that kind of data. I can tell you that we are understaffed, underfunded. When I say underfunded, we have 102,000 people roughly here in Wycomico County. Everybody in agreement with that? Any idea how many people there are in Queen Anne's County? Population?
Forty-eight.
Who's that?
Forty-eight.
You nailed it. Sheriff up there is making 130-some thousand dollars a year. I'm stuck here at 95. I'm not going to complain about that. But what I will talk about are the number of deputies they have within their schools patrolling the road versus what we have. We work with bare numbers here in Wycomico County. Oftentimes, people, we terrify, know there are only three or four deputies patrolling this entire county, 374 square miles at any given time. The Maryland State Police have what they call minimum requirements, two troopers, sometimes street troopers, working a county. When I attend and we have our morning briefings at 9:00 AM Monday through Friday, when I attend this meeting every weekday morning, I see all the backups, all the assist that we are giving to the state police and the city. They're at bare numbers, like we are. But we need more deputies because the demand for our services in the city today is greater than it's ever been. The bulk of our search warrants we're doing right now are in the city. We're staying extremely busy. Now, I say that only because you can imagine in your urban areas, that's where the bulk of your crime is going to be. Even all of our drug traffickers out in the county are coming into the city to get the bulk of their dope and then going back out in the county itself. So we're very, very busy in this city all the time. And we're doing the very best job we can, and I'm confident we will continue doing that, but we do need more manpower. No question about it.
The one thing we've been doing for several years is we've been throwing overtime to this problem to try to get our numbers up on a Friday night when it's the busiest and that type of stuff. But we're at the point now where deputies aren't volunteering for any more overtime because they're getting off a midnight shift and either being assigned to go to the courts on overtime because they're short, or they're going to court on their off time. So they're constantly being tasked with more and more to do. So the voluntary overtime is hard to fill now.
Well, they got to balance that against quality of life, too.
Absolutely.
They want to be home with their families at some point.
The other thing is, is we have, you know, mandatory minimums also. So a guy that's getting off at 8:00 in the morning, who's been working since midnight, and we have a need in the court, our needs come first. You're being held over, whether it's voluntary or voluntold, you're still staying for overtime.
Yeah. And their fatigue.
We're getting to the point where overtime is no longer a quick fix. You know, it's a constant problem. The one thing, when we do get these deputies available to go into the courts or these other units, is that our overtime should decrease a little bit. It's not going to be a huge decrease. Will it match the amount that we have to pay them? Probably not, but it is going to be somewhat of a buffer to the cost that, you know, three new deputies are going to cost.
That's the first thing I looked at, and it's still pretty much the same when you're overtime, but I realize that you have to sort of pace yourself through that.
Absolutely.
It's not something you're going to be able to, I think, make any radical guess.
And our newer deputies are more inclined to work those overtime assignments than those who've been on the job for a while. You know? Absolutely, they are.
They have more energy.
You bet they do.
At that young age.
More energy, more stamina.
Less kids.
Yep. Less commitments.
I'm glad you found, I mean, I didn't flinch when I saw the three positions that you were looking for. I didn't know about the Haitian, which I think is very good. Because the discussion's come up so many times about how hard it is to find any type of minorities, you know, in your profession.
Absolutely.
Whatever. And multilingual is unbelievable. I mean, I've been to a lot of Haitian events recently, and the last year I've been to more Haitian events than I've been in the last 10.
So have I, Mr. President.
Yeah, they had a flag day this.
And I've immensely enjoyed being with them.
Yes.
Absolutely, and learning about them.
Yeah, they're very anxious to be a part of the community and to get engaged. And the numbers are increasing, as we've seen through the Board of Education as well. So to have an officer that can speak the Haitian language, can speak Creole, I think is really fantastic.
When the chief deputy brought this one prospective candidate in my office a couple of weeks ago, I was so enamored with his presence, with what he had to say, his reason wanting to be in law enforcement, what he wanted to do for our community. And then I got a picture sent to me by the chief deputy last week when I was down in Millville Beach on vacation saying, this guy has agreed, if we get the funding, he wants to come with us. Because he is being courted by a number of law enforcement agencies right now.
President Ashani spoke earlier during, I don't know if you heard, but she spoke during public comments, and that was the first thing she stated, she was so glad to see that you had brought this individual into your office.
Absolutely.
She supported your request.
We have Spanish-speaking officers, but we do not have any Spanish officers. The only one, in fact, the city's got is Milton Rodriguez. Who is a very tenured employee, that's been there forever. And we often have to rely on Milton to translate for us because there's a growing Hispanic community, Haitian community here in Wycomico County. But no, we do not, Joe.
And he's used a lot as a translator?
Absolutely.
Captain, if I ask you about the vehicles, the leases, et cetera, I noticed that you transferred what was your capital for 2019, for 2019, those expenses, you just transferred them to a lease program in 2020.
Correct.
With about, I guess, a $26,000 savings. What it didn't state, and what I couldn't find really, was how many vehicles are we talking about as far as on the lease program?
Okay, well, technically, I guess this year, or '19 was our first year of the lease from the amount we use this year towards the lease. The eight vehicles that we had coming in were taken over by the lease. They were actually purchased by Enterprise and then brought to, you know, our fleet. In addition to those, we'll be adding 25 additional vehicles in the next year, and that'll be for the current lease. So technically, we'll be paying, we were already in the first year lease for all 33 vehicles.
So the total's 33?
Thirty-three.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Eight from this current year, and the additional years, it adds an additional 25 vehicles. So we're already starting to see the first vehicles of those arrive to the uplifters. They've already been registered, and they're at the uplifters now. And it's going to take us a while to melt in a fleet of this many vehicles. So that's why, when they first sold the lease program, you would get an additional lease the next year. Well, we decided right away that there's no way we could handle any more incoming vehicles throughout the year and be able to uplift them and melt them into our fleet. Downlift vehicles, remove them from the fleet, and then bring these into the fleet. So that's why we didn't ask for any additional funds. So those, the funds that we've asked for this year are actually the second-year lease for the total of 33 vehicles. And that'll dramatically change our fleet overnight.
So with the old vehicles, do you, will you put those in as, will you sell those? The lease company doesn't have anything to do with those, right?
The vehicles that are owned by the county now will not have any part of that. That's correct. They'll be sold.
Pete Richardson's auction.
I saw two out there the other day.
Yeah.
The old Crown Bix.
The old Crown Bix. 2006 is most of them with.
Two 20-plus in my plus.
Yeah. And they average about $800 a piece if we get that, unfortunately. By the time they reach there, some of them have been already deadlined for major repairs that I wouldn't pay for to bring a vehicle that age back to life.
And I think that's what's always worried me, and I think other council members, that you guys are driving around with 220,000 miles in these vehicles. It's just not good to have old vehicles. I've never been really sold on a lease program. I think it's, to a certain degree, it's a quick fix. It's sort of like, the only analogy I have is like nowadays with cell phones, you know, instead of paying 200, now you're paying 1,200. But nobody thinks about that. They just wonder whether they're going to pay a month, you know? And it's like, well, here it is. So that concerns me.
Sir, as you are, I was also, and I've been pitched this for an extended period of time. And we've been throwing $300,000 at our fleet for year after year, and it's getting, it's creating nothing new. I mean, we're barely bringing in enough new vehicles to take care of the vehicles that are dying on the other end.
That's right.
Plus, the vehicles that are dying are five years past their lifetime.
That's why we're only getting a hundred bucks for them.
Yeah, they've been on life support for way too many years.
And that's part of the first question I had, though, Captain, is that leases are very strictly structured on mileage. And I think in some of the leases, there's, most of the leases are 20,000 as far as the term. And I couldn't imagine that your guy, that your vehicles were going to stay within that time period and only have 20,000 a year on them.
Yeah, there's no mileage. If I can have Sergeant Taylor come up.
Sergeant Chris Taylor is our fleet manager at the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. Let's see again.
In a former life, he was an ASC certified mechanic, so he is my vehicle guy by far. If you don't know how to do it, just have someone to work for you that does know how to do it, and Chris is my guy. He's been helping me with this lease program, and he's very well versed in it, but there is no mileage exception. The only mileage issue will be is what the resale value of that vehicle is at the end of the five years.
The end of the term, yeah.
At the end of the term. Well, we haven't sold a vehicle in my, probably my 17 years past sergeant that brought more than like 1,200 dollars, because they've all been.
So old.
So old and at the end of their life.
Worn out.
So replacing a vehicle after five years is something we've been chasing for a long time. This is the one chance to do it. I've spoke to numerous other agencies that are also trying it, and the biggest thing that I'm getting from them is, we've been throwing money at this problem for years, and we're not finding a fix. It's time to try something new unless you want to throw a lot more money at it. And, you know, to replace 15 vehicles a year, just off the top of my head, 1.5, you know, if the vehicle costs $40,000, it's $40,000 to equip the vehicle. And when we take the equipment out of a vehicle that's 12 years old, it has zero value. We can barely give it away, GOV deals and that type of thing, because it's 12-year-old technology. The idea of five-year-old technology going back into a vehicle, if it's lights and siren, if it's radios, if it's radio cases, that type of thing, if it's weapons vaults, those things we may see a new life on, but we're not seeing any new life at this rate of replacing a vehicle 12, 13 years into it. I know the sheriff just mentioned this morning, we're chasing an identical vehicle, and our vehicle died on the scene. What about if that officer was going to an active shooter?
Active shooter situation in school. That's all I could think about.
There's some of those cars that are still out by the courthouse. I couldn't imagine them getting over 75 miles an hour.
Well, those are backups for the road patrol, but they're also the sponge to our maintenance program, because they have to be able to keep those vehicles alive. If I told you, you need to replace a 1,200-hour transmission on an 800-hour car, would you manage your money that way?
Right.
And I feel bad managing the county's money that way. We're blowing through maintenance money just trying to keep our fleet alive. This is a chance to get a kickstart into our fleet, and at this point, we're running out of darts. Talked to the risk managers, even the internal auditor, and they're telling me that we won't know until we give this a try. Whether we continue with it in years after five, whether we decide to do an additional lease on top of this, is probably when we evaluate after we've been in it for a couple of years, and we see where we are on mileage, we see where we are on maintenance. And that's the one thing that they're offering is the additional help with maintenance, with selecting the right places to go to maintenance. Because they're managing vehicles that they will ultimately own as well to resell. And that's what they're counting on to make their money is the resale value.
So we had some reduction in maintenance expenses?
Absolutely. And one of the things that they do is, since they manage this throughout the nation, they can say, hey, this model of this year car, it's going to cost you a heck of a lot after this mileage. We really need to find it, shift it down or move it over, because they're bringing the history of all over the country for it, instead of just our local.
Do we have any real, so what's our real projections as far as call savings over five, 10 years? You're just kind of waiting?
Ten years, it's 280,000 is what they are projecting to save.
Over that time period or per year?
Per that time, for the 10 years. Now, one of the things that you have is the gas. You know, they're, like, right now, there's a list, and you recommend, you talk about the court cars. Well, mechanically, they are kept, but I mean, you get in, the seat is worn out, you're sitting on the frame, you know, your steering wheel's got notches out, there's so many other factors in there that we're not even fixing. So we would have to if they continue. So that's, that isn't, actually, those extras are not in that savings, which, you know, your office, you know, it's got a printer, it's got a computer, it's your office. So by far, it's a much better condition that we don't have numbers for that part.
What they gave us, part of their, you know, their layout, was talking about the savings that you'd make in fuel and maintenance. And I sort of stressed to them that you would have the same savings in fuel and maintenance if you purchased vehicles as opposed to leasing. So, I don't know, sometimes you try to keep it from being apples and oranges.
Right.
And I was just trying to get the cost of it, and how cost efficient it was to do a lease program as opposed to buying. And, you know, we've asked the internal auditors to sort of try to evaluate themselves, but, you know, I think the determination's been we have to do a wait-and-see type thing. And again, as it is right now, you do have a lot of cars on the road that just have to be off the road.
They're operationally unsound.
Yes.
And the idea of being able to push 33 cars into our fleet and push out, if we get those three positions, we will push out 30 vehicles out the other side. That's an immediate. It's one for one, except we may keep three additional ones for the three additional deputies that are coming in. So that's 30 of our biggest maintenance problem vehicles that will go out of the fleet between now and when I see you this time next year.
Right.
Should I make it back?
I didn't be here.
And the next 10 that are going to auction, I'd be surprised if they get $800, because most of them are major repair items right now. Just the timing of them.
Couple are going to be two.
And we're certainly excited to try this because we're not getting ahead, we're doing what we're doing now. We're falling farther and farther behind. So we're excited to see how this is going to work out, if it's going to work for us. And as the captain said a while ago, we will certainly reevaluate this year after year to see if this is physically responsible for us and for the county.
But it sounds like a good thing. Don't know how long they've been successful, but usually, good things don't last long.
No.
Well, they just started in Maryland because the law changed. So they've been doing this nationally for a while now. Yes, and it's just now fresh here, because before, they were taxed, even though a government entity had them, that changed. So we're the third county, and since us to entertain it, there's been three more that have signed on.
I will tell you, it's what the federal government does exclusively. FBI, DEA, Homeland Security, they all lease their vehicles.
Our deputy that's in the marshal's unit right now, he's driving a.
A leased Dodge pickup truck.
Yes, a federally leased vehicle.
And there is no mileage restriction, and there is no year restriction. If you wanted to make it shorter or longer, it's all open and all that.
We have a lot of flexibility here to meet our needs.
Bill? I've got one quick and last expense question. Our briefing material takes us all the way back like to '16. Just help me, what happened in, on hospitalization, was the number, yes, I see Laura waving at me, because the number like, yeah.
Fiscal year '16, that's when the benefits were added to the individual departments.
They used to have a department that just took care of all the benefits. Prior, everything was, stayed with HR or.
That's why that number jumped. It jumped at night. That's why that number jumped. It jumped at nineteen. It was a saying like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, they all of a sudden went off the charts at nineteen.
And you'll notice the same thing, that we didn't have a, an electric bill until about two years ago, when they were trying to get the true cost of running each department instead of having the electric bill go to public work.
I do, I do have some explanation.
Public work, sure.
We now get our own electric bill, which now we have buy-in on keeping our electric bill low. Because if I can save money on electric, I can ask for more money somewhere else.
And that's truth in financing.
Yes. And that's what they were trying to create. And that's why we picked up that.
We had a lot of that in the county where, you know, I was arguing that point the other day about county roads going out and doing work at the airport, not getting paid for it or credit for it or whatever, you know? And it's the same way, same way this was.
I think that event this weekend at the airport was a huge success.
There were a lot of people, there were a ton of people there.
Heard great things about it.
Yeah, it was good. Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
All right. We appreciate taking the time.
Gentlemen, thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
I didn't get off H1.
Trying to make it easy.
Which was vehicles.
All right.
I'll give you five minutes.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Next item on the work session agenda is Board of Elections. How are you? Anthony, how are you?
Police officer.
Good afternoon. Sorry to hold you up.
Anthony, where you been, man? You disappear after a election, man. What do I see you?
Oh, no, we're working very hard behind scenes.
That's right.
That may be a good thing, Joe. You might, might have a violation if he has to track you down. I guess what we were just mostly interested in is we're seeing some additional expenses in, with the Board of Elections. Just kind of like thought it'd be good, best to talk to you one-on-one to see what, how those costs were justified and what, you know, what your reason was.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Anthony Gutierrez, election director for Wycomico County. Laura's email alerted us to that question. Excuse me. So we did go back and look from FY sixteen forward. And in our current FY twenty request, we've identified six items that are affected by our new facility. And I want to definitely say, we are so grateful to the taxpayers of Wycomico County for allowing us this larger, more comfortable, more secure facility to conduct Wycomico elections, and we're very grateful for that. Three other items, line items are affected by anticipated changes in polling places. We are hoping to go back to Parkside High School with the 2020 elections. They were unavailable before due to construction. But now Dunlar Elementary probably won't be available for the primary, hopefully for the general. When we make those kind of changes, election law requires us to send out notices to the voters so that they get the most up-to-date information clear on where they're supposed to go vote. So three of those line items are affected by those official notices, the production and the postage regarding that. And finally, another item that affects this particular fiscal year is that we are actually conducting two elections in FY twenty. Due to the state election calendar now, we are on one election per fiscal year. But because of the City of Salisbury 2019 municipal election, and our board members passing the agreement to once again conduct that election for them, we conduct it, we'll be conducting that in November 2019, within this fiscal year. We have, we need to have those funds in our department budget so that when we expend them, after the November election, we'll send the city an invoice. We keep logs of how much time the staff expends and how many supplies we use. And then we send the invoice to the city. And it takes a little lag time for them to process that and pay the county a check. That check normally goes to the general fund. So the county recoups all those expenses. But since we're preparing for the April presidential primary concurrently with the city election this year, we don't want to run out, run out of our own funds for the April election. So again, the way we've done in the past and what we were proposing to do again, we need those funds in our department budget. The projected for the whole city election is fifty thousand. A lot of that is paid directly from city to vendors. But the county's portion that we expend, we will invoice them, the city will pay that invoice, and it'll come back to the county in the general fund. So that, that's three line items we identified.
Anthony, will we have, because I'm still a little bit confused on this, will we have special elections in 2020 with our, and help, help me here, so you, I mean, like our school board, I've heard mixed names as, whether they serve that turnout to the end, or whether, you know, they have to get re-elected at the next election, which is our 2020. And the same thing with your replacement, Mark.
Yeah.
Do they serve that turnout, or do they have to get, do we have a special election in 2020 for that?
I've not been contacted by the Board of Ed regarding, looking into the issue of the first part of your question. But on the second, I did speak to the state board candidate division director. And he indicated that once we get the official notice from the council attorney that there will be a vacancy, then the county will make a request to put that, what I quote, "special election" on the 2020 ballot. So what that means is that in District Two, for those county voters, they'll not only have president and Congress and the two delegates to their national conventions, they'll have a fifth contest for county council on both the Democrat and Republican ballot. So minimal addition for our work and our ballot production, but it will generate a few more ballot styles. And certainly, hope that the turnout definitely goes up in District Two to reflect that interest in that contest.
The, you have a lot of costs, I guess, office costs and all that, that actually increased exponentially. Is that due to the new building, the trend?
So the items, we identified with the new facility, the first one off the top...
Is that part of the polling that you discussed, the additional polling?
It is. The time clock, now we have two time clocks because the staff is spread out across the building. Another copier, again, that, that increased the cost. Telephone landlines, we are on a new, more improved system with more stations, so the cost went up on that contract. Additional data lines that we're going to need to have in place before the November presidential so that installation factors in that, is in fifty-two oh oh fifty-five. Electricity, that, we are, we now have more than double the square footage we had at Beaverton Street. So that's certainly driving up our electric costs. And security services, and that's a great thing because before, we were renting from a private landlord in the county, rightly so, did not want to improve a building that we would eventually turn back over to a private landholder. So now it's a county facility, we can do a lot more physical security measures, which we've already done. We have more plans to do that in FY twenty. But in addition, that line item covers our network security with the 2018 elections, all these new cybersecurity threats that the state is now requiring Board of, local board offices to have installed. So that's, that's actually mandated by the state.
And what was the, what was the increase of your legal, I think it's contingency?
Yes. The, our local board recently passed a new contract for their board council, and they approved a higher rate. In addition, reflecting on last year's elections, we, we have multiple-day canvases when we process the absentee and provisional ballots after an election. Those used to take two and a half days. Now we're into five or six days and longer. Plus, there are a lot more legal questions that the board attorney is having to answer. And as we saw with the Board of Ed recount last year, which was actually a small scale, it wasn't a county-wide, there were considerable legal issues to resolve for our attorney to work on. So we wanted to add more money. And again, that is contingency. If we don't need it, we won't spend it. But we certainly wanted it there just in case.
Because, I mean, the number went from, the number went from three thousand to thirty-five thousand. I just thought that was, I didn't know if you had a real reason as to what that, that tenfold difference was for.
Well, those are some of the, the anticipated increased amount of work that the attorney's going to have to be doing going forward. And again, we won't know until we get through this year what our actual will be, and we'll certainly scale that back if necessary.
Questions for anyone? Any questions in general? Well, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, Anthony.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye, Captain.
Came we adjourn?
Looks like we might be there. Entertainment motion to adjourn.
Move.
Hey, Barry.